On the meeting to order, we'll wait for Nick to give us the first order of business. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
You're next.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes from the regular July 21, 2021 meeting, and they are attached to your agenda.
So moved.
There are seconds.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Shahar. Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Under Communications and Correspondence, I'm just going to give a brief update on the Aragoni Bridge project. There was a meeting held at noon today with the Chamber of Commerce, and we found out that, I think a good thing, and that is that they expect that the barriers that are on the bridge will be removed in September, which means barring unforeseen circumstances in terms of the work, the four lanes should be open in September. We plan to have another meeting on August 26 at 11:00 a.m., and they're held by Zoom if anyone wants to attend them. And they'll give us an update at that point, but the project is going very well, and they do anticipate additional work that's still being done. Most of it's going to be under the bridge, so they're still doing some of the work on the underpinnings. But I thought that was good news to bring to you, and things are progressing nicely. Any questions on that?
No.
That's good news.
Excellent.
I don't have any other particular correspondence to share, so I'll ask Nick if there is any public comment in the queue.
None.
Not at this point. Thank you. The next item is the Portland Public Library policy regarding fines on late item returns, and I know that Janet Nocheck, our Director of the Library, is going to be presenting this to us. And for your edification, there is some literature within your packets. So I'll turn it over to Jan. Hi, Jan.
Hi, Jan. Good evening. So the board voted a couple of months ago after a fresh discussion on our loan policy. We were updating various things, and one of them was that important was that we wanted to join a growing group of libraries who have decided that, it was found in many cases, have decided that fines, overdue fines on items are not the way to go anymore because they are somewhat of a barrier to access, to equitable access for all of our students and users. People have economic disadvantages because these are our files if they cannot take material out of the library for free, and there are situations such that they run up a fine or they have this issue where they often run up fines for some people that we have because we have some intellectual disabilities or don't even realize them attempting to utilize them. And this has been something that the American Library Association has come out against, and several of the libraries in our group now, our group being Library Connection, 30 libraries that we share our database that they use with. So we've scamped in fund the libraries also that have these same buying situation. And we have some that stopped tracking funds, and they, that's important for us because they're one of the big libraries near us and the leading libraries, and they are going to be joining Library Connection. It's probably a crap lot so damn little, I'm not sure. But soon they'll be part of our group, and we'll be able to see what people have taken out at each library, either there or here. We'll be sharing some things. Our rules can be different, but the more that they're the same, I think the more welcoming it is for patrons and staff. Libraries who have changed to either pay the way fine or kind of offering people the ability to say, I'll pay what I can now, you know, maybe more later perhaps, but people just kind of pay what they're equivalent with. That has proven to be very helpful. It was like, it's just kind of a good thing for the library's goodwill, I think. I think it's just something that, you know, it's kind of like if you went into a store and every time you lean in that little hassle of, you know, what you're doing in the store, and if you go in every time a family member has a fine or something, you know, this is very unpleasant, and people make you stop leaving the library, which is a sad thing for people that really benefit from these libraries being in distress. And elders who may not have, you know, maybe other ways of paying for services. So you think that overall it really is the way to go? We looked at some of the, you know, the ways that people have done this, and, you know, I would say if you really wish it had happened, that we would not leave fines on people's records. At this particular time, people, many people haven't been coming in too often, like last year or so, and they may come in trying to surprise me two years ago. That kind of thing happens to some degree all the time. It's kind of a common thing. Sad situations in my, many years in libraries where people were rudely awakened to something happening five years ago or whatever, and now they can't do what they need. It's just, it's not a good time for people about that kind of thing, that we really kind of need to be a little more forgiving and make people happier right now, I think. And that's part of the softer side of it. You know, some of the practical matters, the number of overdue items has decreased. We really have put in some things in place through our system electronically that the loans are extended automatically. Some people have a few more days that they will keep the item up to a few more weeks if they want, in many cases. But that's cut down a lot. We also have an online service where they can go in and check their records, they can update their books themselves to some degree, and they can, you know, find out what they owe when they, you know, ahead of time. They can notice too if they're looking at their receipts that will tell when they're coming due, renew it or bring it back from there. So some of these things have helped patrons to save, and that's the truth. You know, I'm open to questions and thoughts on this, of course, and that's the basic faith and content that I wanted to make. Laurel is our board member that was supportive of this. Well, all the board did support this thought, you know, we send fines to not actually accumulate fines in the new issues. Did you have a comment, Laurel?
Sure, sure. I'll chime in. Thank you, Jan, for sending us tonight, and thank you all on the board for having us on your agenda. This is a conversation that started between the library board and Jan well over two years ago, so we're very excited to be taking some action and hoping for your support to adopt a fine-free policy. I think for the board, this conversation kind of begins and ends with our mission statement, and the mission of the Portland Library is, says that we are dedicated to serving the informational, educational, cultural, and recreational needs of the community, that we are responsive to the diverse, to the needs of our diverse users, and that we are committed to the highest ideals of library service. And so the board unanimously supports a fine-free policy and believes that this will help us kind of be in better alignment with our mission. And I guess I would also say that this, for me, I've been very proud of the diversity, equity, and inclusion work that we've undertaken in Portland over the last year and a half, and of the community members who've spoken up, and of you all on the board of selectmen for listening and for the action that you've taken in creating the task force on solidarity and the equity trainings you've all undertaken, participated in. And for me, this fine-free policy for the library is very much in line with all of that equity work that's already happening, and it's a very important step for the library to take right now. Jan already mentioned that communities all around us have already started participating in this. Hundreds of libraries across the country have already taken this step, and in Connecticut, many other communities, including Middletown, East Hampton, Wallenford, Colchester, Hartford, Monhaven, Branford, Avon, many, many others all around us have already taken this step. So we've been in very good company, we would be the first to be trying this out. And I guess I would say that when we started this conversation several years ago, the board felt strongly then that this was the right direction, the direction we wanted to move in. We decided to start by taking the step of putting in place the auto-renewal program. We've been using it and immediately saw a decrease in fines. We also, the library made the decision when we closed for renovation a year and a half ago to eliminate fines on a temporary basis, and that policy has continued through the duration of the pandemic. So the board feels that this is the right moment right now to make this a permanent policy, and so we're hoping to have your support for that.
Jan, can I ask you a question? I know I'm obviously at most of your board meetings, but I have a question for you. When we have items that are late, you know, in particular like, say, passes or if they borrow equipment, do we follow, I mean, do we follow up on that stuff? I don't think we've ever talked about that. I'm just, I'm curious how it's approached.
Yeah, well, you're asking about museum passes, which are around, something that are only going out for a day or so. That would, I'm glad you asked that question, because that would be exempt from this. I mean, we do charge a hefty fine or something like that that has to come out immediately. And, you know, right now we have a collection of board games, the Uncle Ward games, that people can borrow, we got those through a gift from the community, WordPress comes through the combination. So those things that are just weekly borrowed would be different, and we do call and make sure that people come in and just, you know, they wouldn't be blocked in use of the libraries. Wanting that anybody that kind of doesn't bring anything back, it's there a certain length of time, and usually about three weeks following the three weeks. Means that they don't pay for the item, they'll get it back, and that's on their records. Many are definitely blocked at all the libraries in our group, so they can block in Teacher of Middletown and Blasdenberry, and so that kind of thing, you know, that was a factor. So there is kind of that kind of requirement. But, you know, books, other materials, they have a little fine that keeps accruing, and lost a book or something else, whatever, that's kind of a different situation.
Thanks.
There really is no reason to punish people if you want to bring it back, you want to get the materials back. That's how I feel.
Well, Jan, when we look at your Portland Library loan policy, it does have, and all the selectmen have this, under overdue items highlighting is pending approval of board of selectmen, and I'll read it. "Portland Library does not assess overdue fines for most borrowed materials. And secondly, fines are assessed only for late returns of special items such as museum passes, equipment, or technology, and for books from the Zoom collection in accord with a schedule published on the library website and available on request." The only question I have is, what is the Zoom collection?
Yeah, the Zoom collection are books that are really popular right now and that only go out for a week, a week or two. I don't think it's going to change to two weeks, every shorter loan period, no renewal for a while, so.
Are they the more popular books?
I'm sorry?
Are they the more popular books?
Yes, yes. So we actually, you know, we have a collection active because of this last year, we didn't have the traffic coming in, but that was part of the goal.
So my question would be, what is the board looking for from the board of selectmen? Are you only looking for us to approve these two paragraphs within the loan policy, and from that I would, I would deduce that the rest is already in place?
Correct. The only other thing that isn't in place, you guys not charging fines as people afford would be, shall we rescind the fines that somebody had from the past, if something's on their record in the room three years ago?
What I would like the board to think about is revising the policy first, and then in terms of your other request, I think that should be a separate motion, just because I think if you want a concurrence on the policy, that's what we should be voting on to begin with, and then we'll look at the fees. But I'll open it up to the selectmen for what the board wants to do. Rick?
I have a question, Janet, because this is the first time I've seen this. So I'm okay with not charging a fine, but what, what type of penalty or what would you do if somebody, you know, doesn't bring a book back after, I don't know, a significant period and you've notified them a few times? How are you going to deal with those situations?
Well, pretty much the same way with it now. It stays on your record, and they are sent a bill twice. I think we just send the bill once, but it is on your record if they, if they can look up, if they go online or they can call. But it's on the record, and that record is seen by the 30 libraries, so if they go over to a library.
But there's no, there'll be no bill. There'll be no bill, right? There'll be no, nothing owed.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Would they be charged anything or?
No, no. What I'm saying, you asked what would happen if they didn't bring an item back, wasn't that the question?
Yes.
It's a replacement.
Yeah, if they don't bring it back, it's on the record and you're blocked.
So there's a difference between accruing fines for your item being late and being billed for an item being permanently missing. And if at the end of a regular length of time, however long past the ultimate due date, after the item's been auto-renewed, then patrons will continue to be issued a bill as they currently are. So this doesn't eliminate people's responsibility for the items that they've checked out. You just don't accumulate fines for them being returned late. And one nice benefit that we didn't mention earlier is that many libraries find that initially when they implement a policy like this, there is a large influx of way overdue materials that are finally returned. Many libraries have reported seeing that.
Yeah, it's effectively, it's, if you don't return the item, you're going to be blocked, and you're not going to be able to borrow, and it's going to be spread around the other libraries that are part of the consortium. And then the, but it also promotes bringing it back because there's no penalty to bring it back. It would lift that block, you know, previously you'd bring the material back and have to pay a fine. Now it's just bring the material back.
Right.
And the penalty would be if you don't bring it back. Okay.
And thank you all for saying, because my brain, a bill is something in our vocabulary that is something different from a fine, I didn't explain.
What, so could you just clarify for me again, what do you mean by the word bill?
That's when an item is not returned, if a book is a month overdue, if it's three weeks overdue, then we process a bill, the physical, that we send out in mail and by email, and that is on their record. And so if somebody goes into the library, to another library, or two hours, and use the card, it shows up when they go to check out the item.
Thank you.
And so that's when they don't return it after a period.
So then they're blocked? They would be blocked at that point?
That's correct, yeah.
Until you pay for the item so that the item can be replaced.
Exactly.
Okay.
You can bring it back. Sometimes they find it or ask it, you know.
Lou has a question, Jan.
So, so Jan, or Laurel, how big of a problem is this? Do we have, let's say, thousands of dollars worth of books that aren't returned, $500 worth of books that aren't returned? If this is a large problem, then I guess we would need to address it. My concern is that if it's $100 over the course of a year, then that seems like something that can be taken care of internally. Just a question.
Right now.
Do you know how much, do you know how many, how many books are not returned every year?
I can't say how many are not returned every year, I'm pretty, but right now there's about 13% of the books that are checked out are past due today. They'd be accruing a fine if we were doing that. So, you know, the percentage was like $400, $3,000 or something. So, you know, it's not a large percent. About 4% of our patrons, I believe, have overdue items. They might only be a day overdue if the system is kind of, without this number. But, yeah, I mean, we did, in the past, we made over, maybe took in, I should say, over $5,000 in fines years ago. In 2019, our last full kind of regular year, it was about $2,000. So it's come down a lot, and I anticipate it not increasing because of the things we talked about with the auto-renewal. Based on, like, on how many books are, versus last year, 2020, it's only about $800, you know, so, but that was more than we can allow.
Well, Lou, the reason why it's important for us to address this from a policy perspective is that the folks who are most impacted by this, but it's not a significant source of revenue, but it does have a significant impact particularly on children and low-income families. And so if we can make the library materials and services and programming more accessible to folks who are most impacted by this in our community, that's a really important step that we can take, and truly I think is, you know, you can't put a dollar amount on that.
And another thing that some of the libraries have done, Middletown in particular and Colchester have said, we have, they have physically a jar, I'm not sure, probably is a glass, but something that they allow people to offer donations or at the cash or the sort of that, they will, you know, I think a lot of people do feel like they should pay something when they're late. A lot of people are good citizens, and, you know, they will pay what they can. And Colchester, the library there, said that there was actually kind of more taken in the first year that we did that than they had in previous years, where some people gave more perhaps than we do. But we could still certainly encourage that people to pay what they can if we want to do something like that, because that way we wouldn't lose all of that revenue.
Rick, did you have a question?
Yes, a long sort of follow-up with what Lou was asking. Is there, do you have any information on how many books you, you actually don't get back or that you have a real difficult time? I mean, not, not just the 13% that are overdue, of that 13%, how many of those are sort of become uncollectible?
It, you know, I can't say it to the dares, but it looked like recently it might have been about now, that looked like they weren't coming back.
That's, wow. It's a significant number.
Right now, like, you know, I think probably about half of that go non-overdue for different reasons. You know, we do have some people with trenching, as every community does, and sometimes they just, you don't see them again, so there's always some percentage unfortunately.
So without looking at the existing policy, and maybe this goes along with what Susan said earlier, is that this policy, is this a brand-new policy or are there parts of this policy that are the old policy, and there's just certain parts that you're adding? And if you could just highlight those for our next meeting, then we could look at those changes, and then I think we're okay.
Yeah, I think basically the only change of substance is the fines, you know, going fine through.
Okay.
So it would be, do you have this?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what, what you'll have to do is amend the last paragraph on the first page because, you know, it talks about owing $25 or more in overdue fines and/or billed items. So the billed items are going to continue to remain there, right? But you're going to remove the overdue fines.
Well, there could still be fines on record. And if a third of us are not charging fines, they still might have gone to the library that does and have accrued fines there.
Yeah, I got you.
We can't control that. So it could still be there.
Yeah, you're right. Thanks for clarification.
And I think, I think patrons need to, and I think you said it well, need to understand that if you don't return an item ever, you need to pay for it, or else your borrowing privileges are suspended from our library as well as, is it any library within the library connection?
Correct, yes. And it's pretty well enforced, you don't go again for another library.
Right. So I couldn't go to Middletown and borrow a book because I wanted to, once they joined the library connection?
Once they joined, right. If you were a stop-blocker, yeah. And I mean, if people want to, obviously, most people coming to our, we want to pay something, you know, that's what we're coming for. So, you know, we feel like that police itself is, they're regular customers, we don't have too much of a problem.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to vote on this tonight? Do you want to wait? What do you want to do?
I could, I could vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so as I said, and Laurel or Jan, please correct me if I'm incorrect, the two items that we are voting on agreeing to is that the Portland Library does not assess overdue fines for most borrowed materials. Fines are assessed only for late returns of special items such as museum passes, equipment or technology, and for books from the Zoom collection, which is the shorter period of time for borrowing popular items in accord with a schedule published on the library website and available on request. Everything else in this policy remains the same, but those items need to be approved by the board of selectmen. Is that correct?
Thank you, yes.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the two changes that are identified in this loan policy document for the library.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jan. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, do you want to take up the other item, selectmen, in terms of previous payments? Which is on the memo that you have in your packet submitted by Janet Nocheck on July 23. Decisions include whether to wipe clean old fines, allow payment in lieu of fines, quote, "pay what you can." Donations would be welcome for DVD that is funded by the Friends, a volunteer group. You're going to have to explain that. That's not, I think you need to explain. Are you saying that if anyone pays anything, it's going to go to DVDs? It won't come to the general fund?
Well, only if the Friends pay for the DVDs. What we've had in place was that when DVD is overdue, those fines, you know, if somebody pays a fine on that, those fines, we go back into the DVD kind of pocket so that we pay for the processing of them. So we'd be losing that if we had no fines coming in, so there is some expense to processing. It's, we still have dollars kind of in that pot, so it shouldn't really have a major effect. Shouldn't have any effect for some time. I think DVDs will not be, in the long run, something that people people are. I don't know how much longer they're going to be viable for on it, but.
So what you're saying is any donated money does not go to the general fund? You're recommending that it go to the Friends?
Only if it's for DVD donations, yeah, related to them.
Wait, wait a minute. Wait a minute. No, that's not what this says. Am I right? It says, "allow payment in lieu of fines." These donations would be for the DVD, be welcome for DVD that is funded by The Friends, a volunteer group, and processing of the DVDs has been funded by fines. But they're not getting any fines anymore, so I'm reading this as you're recommending that the donated, pay-as-you-can, would go to The Friends, not to the general fund. Am I misinterpreting that?
I didn't really read. It says, it says, on the way, sorry, yes, but isn't necessarily what I had in mind. I was thinking, you know, if some of it went to The Friends, if somebody came in and said, "Oh, I had these DVDs here, you know, that we send that to."
How are you going to know if that $5 bill is for a DVD or that dollar bill is for a book? How are you going to?
What we do now is we press a button on the cash register, that's the department for that.
Oh, I was imagining a cookie jar that we would put our money in. You're not talking about a.
I'm not sure Tom would like us to put a jar.
Well, you mentioned a glass jar.
We're not going to be taking that jar and putting it in our cash register, but we have to trump dinner and, you know, being above border, you know, if somebody brings in some money and gives a donation, what we do now is we put it in the cash register, press the button for donation, and we'll see what that is and what other problems, but.
I thought you were going to have a glass jar.
It's to be opposed to a moment in order to send general fines.
So.
It's a little our pain, my own.
I think if you're going to do away with fines, then you probably have to wipe the slate clean. But I'll just say this about this whole conversation. I mean, I think people need to be accountable for their actions. So, if somebody's not bringing a book in after it's, you know, way overdue or you start calling them, there should be consequences for that person, which I believe you said there would be. You know, and people have to realize they're borrowing these books, they need to bring them back, or they're going to lose their privileges.
How long before you're going to send me a bill, Jan, if I'm late with my book?
If you've got a typical book that's a three-week item, billed at 28 days.
And then I won't be able to take anything out? Okay. And I can't take anything out? So, if I don't bring it back or pay for it?
Right.
28 days.
28 days, yeah. That's fair.
Okay.
But remember, too, that your budget is predicated on some fines coming in. So, I think if there's any way that we can make sure that we're accounting for that or not spending in certain areas, because that revenue is in your budgets. It's not in your budget, per se. It's in the revenue section of your budget, which you have your budget report in front of you, and I think there's probably a line item for the fines. On page two, we did budget $3,000 for fines. Whether, and I don't know that we get any fines from anywhere else. There may be some very miscellaneous areas.
You do get some money back for printing, which covers probably a lot of the expense there, but that's probably, that brings in more dollars. I know the expense is huge right now. It brings in more than a fine. We didn't get $3,000 back from $2,000.
Well, you've already gotten $102.60.
Yeah, oh, in a month.
Yeah, so, we're doing okay.
They're trying to get them right now.
Okay. Well, we'll just keep an eye on it. I mean, I think if you're, I agree, Rick. I think if you're going to eliminate charging fines, you're not going to go back for somebody that's a month overdue and then start charging her, right? Unless it's you, though. No, I agree. I, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, that, oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Then, all right, then I'll make the motion that, being that you're going to eliminate fines, that all past due fines will be forgiven as well as part of this new policy.
I'll second it.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So, I think we're all set.
One.
Rick Schar has one more question.
One question, Janet, before you go.
I knew there was going to be one, because I thought.
So, when you, so we don't have fines now, but if somebody has to pay for a book that they never, that they didn't return, how do you category that, categorize that income, that money? That, say, $25 or whatever you collect for that book? Does that, is that considered a fine or is that, where does that money get logged?
That actually has been traditionally, we lock it into our, as an income for a lost book, we call it, and it's in the memorial fund. And then if we replace that book or if we can't replace it or for some reason not worth replacing, we could, you know, update another book when, you know, if something else gets damaged or something. So, it kind of saves some dollars for replenishing some things in the collection, you know, my goal. It has been left up to us to handle it traditionally. If you wanted that, that's fine. Maybe that would be a way to get something back to the fund.
Well, what I was thinking was, Susan, how you pointed out, that in our budget, it calls for $3,000 collection in fines. Well, you might be able to replace some of that money if, in fact, they do collect.
Right.
For delinquent books or books that are lost or never returned, that money goes to that line item.
General fund as opposed to, Jan, the memorial fund.
And those dollars wouldn't be available for the processing and replacing of those missing items, though.
No. But you're budgeted for $3,000 in revenue, so it's sort of a balance.
Well, I don't know. I was just throwing it out there for discussion. I'm not saying it, just, but you are taking $3,000 off the budget, although then again, they haven't collected $3,000 in the last couple of years, so.
I don't, I don't think you're going to get close to that.
Yeah, we're not, that's really not an accurate number. So, it's probably not worth the discussion, just pointing it out.
You know what? Just as the library board's going through, just keep monitoring it and see where else as we can, where else we can save, just to make sure. I'm sure this happens every year. When that $3,000 isn't collected in a normal year, they can make it up.
Yeah, okay.
No, you're going to make it up.
Well, you know what I mean.
Who are?
We'll make it up. I'm comfortable.
Okay.
We'll keep an eye on it, Jan. So, we won't change any other policies or practices, is what I'm hearing, okay?
We watch, we definitely maintain, you know, look at the budget as we do.
Sure.
Look closely at this.
Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to add? You mentioned there might be another question you had.
I just thought, you know, people think, as Lou, you know, as Rick was saying, people have to have responsibility, which is totally true. It's, you know, borrowing something that's a public thing that we need to share and they need to bring it back, but there is not any significant effect on how soon people bring them back. According to studies done locally and nationally and again, you know, most of the time it's very successful. And there may be, you know, some more items overdue for a short period of time. It's hard to know precisely what, but it could be some effects, but it doesn't have any significant effect at all on people's behavior as far as return, but that's interesting. You know, there's no bad effect.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I think, anything else from the board on that? I think we're all set. Thank you, Jan, and thank you, Laurel.
Thank you, Janet and Laurel.
Thank you. Thank you, board members as well. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution with a request for a waiver of bid requirements for Scranton Communications and Electronics. And this is something that actually comes to you often because Scranton Communications does do all of our work on police, fire, public works, and grounds materials, our equipment for when we need communications, emergency lighting, and other various miscellaneous items. We come to you with this because we really don't want to have any discrepancy or difficulty with public safety. So, I'll read this resolution for your consideration. Whereas the Town of Portland will be entering into a lease purchase for various equipment items, and whereas the equipment for departments such as police, fire, public works, and grounds will need to be outfitted with communications, emergency lighting, and other various miscellaneous items, and whereas Scranton Communications and Electronics LLC of Middle Haddam, Connecticut, has been a longtime vendor and service provider to the town, has provided excellent service at a reasonable cost for police, fire, and public works. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in the best interest of the town pursuant to Section 1208, Section 7 of the Portland Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bidding requirements of Section 1208 of the Portland Charter as it pertains to the utilizing Scranton Communications and Electronics LLC as the vendor to outfit and install electronic and communications equipment for police, fire, public works, and grounds vehicles as needed. And be it further resolved, the Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectwoman, Susan Bransfield, on behalf of the town, to act on behalf of the Town of Portland to enter into any and all agreements with Scranton Communications and Electronics LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Schar. Discussion? Questions?
I think the only thing that came up maybe when we last renewed it or whatever, and we talked about some of the numbers, and they seem to have been a very good partner.
Yes.
When we looked at the numbers, so, that makes sense.
How long was the lease agreement, Susan?
It's not a lease. It's, we're entering into the lease purchase of various items. It'll be seven years for some of the equipment. Not for the Chromebooks, that's three, but the various, yeah, equipment items, Mike is seven years.
Seven.
And because you're buying so many of these public safety types of equipment, we need to have the electronics done, and Scranton has worked on these other, the other vehicles, and we'd like them to continue that work. That's why we're bringing this to you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed or wants to abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item, this is a long-winded one, but let me tell you what this is. For those folks other than police that have been hired after the year 2002, the full-time employees, which is 30 hours or more, many are 35 and 40 hours, they receive a defined contribution for their retirement, meaning 6% of their salary is set aside into a fund that has been managed up until this point by, at the beginning, the Travelers, and then it moved over to, I believe, no, I take that back. It wasn't, I don't know that it was the Travelers, but it was another company, The Hartford. It was The Hartford. And then they merged into Mass Mutual, and Mass Mutual has been managing these dollars. And now they're getting out of the business of running defined contribution plans, and they're going to the new company, which is Empower.
Oh.
Empower. So, in essence, this has already happened because the Mass Mutual no longer will be maintaining these types of plans. So, they sent the information to us. They warned us for quite a while that this was coming. We've reviewed this with our attorney, Attorney Cohen. He said, "There's really very little that you can change at this point because it is the way this money is being managed." But in order for it to proceed, it does need to come to you. You need to be aware of it, that with respect to, and I'll read from the resolution, "The Amendment and Restatement of the Town of Portland Defined Contribution Plan to Remain in Compliance with Applicable Law and IRS Regulations and, two, Hiring Empower Retirement LLC to Serve as the Record Keeper and also to Provide Other Services to the Plan and Its Participants as the Town May Request from Time to Time, and, three, Appointing Great West Trust Company to Serve as Trustee of the Plan." So, it's essentially something that needs to occur in order for this plan to continue to be in accordance with law and be available for our employees.
So, Susan, isn't the survivor, the new company really part of this Great West Trust Company?
I think it is.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, this same thing happened to our Trittown plan. It went from The Hartford to Mass Mutual. We had, now it's going to another company, but they had a lot of plans around.
Yes, true, yeah. They, absolutely true, right? "The result of the acquisition of the retirement plan business of Mass Mutual Life Insurance Company by Great West Life and Annuity Insurance Company and subsidiaries or other affiliates, including Empire Retirement, hereby approves the change as the plan record keeper and so forth." So, this is to be transparent so that you know, our employees know, the public knows what is happening.
Do the same 6%?
Yes. And the employee matches that with his or her own 6% contribution. In order to participate, the town puts in 6% and the employee puts in 6%. Has to be matched. So, it's 12% of the salary that's saved. And then there's choice among the various funds that are available within the plan.
They can pick the investments, kind of.
Yes. Some of our employees are still on the defined benefit plan. As you know, when you look at the budget every year, the police are the only group that new employees would still be in a defined benefit plan. All the other employees are in the defined contribution.
Would you like a motion to proceed?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented and dated August 4, 2021.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lou. Any questions or comments? I think what Rick said earlier is exactly what's.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I know. We've been through this in my comp, I think any, yeah, happens.
I don't think Mass Mutual is the only one that's getting swept up by them.
Right, right.
They're a large company. Empower is a large company. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposition or any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. The next item is your monthly budget report. Tom Robinson had another appointment tonight. He could not attend, but he did make available to us the monthly budget report and commented that, being that it's just one month in, there hasn't been too much activity. I would call your attention to property taxes for the current year. It looks like the taxes have come in, $15,683,990.93. And I believe the 53.66 is the total percent that we are waiting for. The $15 million is what we're waiting for, is right?
Right.
Yes.
So, well, you collected.
So, we took in $13 million.
Yeah, you collected 46.33, which is pretty good. I mean, because you only get half, you get half each every six months, and.
That's right. So, collections were good for the month of July only.
Um.
So, I will correct myself. So, the year-to-date revenue is $13,546,749. What, the number I read earlier is what we're waiting to get.
Right, but of that fifth, a lot of that $15,683 would be in the January 1st.
Exactly. January 1st.
Yeah, payment.
So, I thought that was good for the month of July. Thank you, everyone who paid their taxes.
That's important.
It is.
Did we get any of the federal money? Did we get any of the federal money? Yeah?
It would not show on this report.
Okay.
I believe, Rick, that we did get the 1.3 million, the first tranche of the American Rescue Plan.
Okay.
Yes, but that would not be reflected in your budget report.
I see structural permits, oh no, oh, I'm sorry, never mind. We collected 9,100 of the 254,000.
Right.
I made the same mistake you did.
Yeah, you gotta read the right column.
Yeah.
The year-to-date revenue is the column we want to read. But that's still good for one month.
Um...
And we're certainly expecting a lot more.
Is the, how's the water park doing? Is there a number in here?
Um, yeah, well, there is. Under property rentals, some of that may, no, wait a minute, that is not theirs. I believe that may be other rental from the schools, you know, Oak Hill, Oak Hill, I believe. I did though, Rick, for the month of June, they brought in about, to us, $54,000, which is a good number. It's one of the higher numbers of the last four years for the month of June.
Okay.
That is not reflected here, but it was on my desk, I did see a report. And they brought in almost $300,000 for fiscal year 2021, which is very good.
Considering.
$294,000 and change, somewhere in that range.
Considering what an awful, you know...
Yes. July and August was a tough time, that's where most of the revenue comes in, but we're pleased to say that number was pretty good this year.
Yeah, substantial.
Yeah. That's right. Um, I'd like to point out, or question, on the sale of town property?
Yeah.
On the very, on page two, the last line item, so that 100,000, I think, was what, what we budgeted for...
For the fire.
The old police station.
Right.
Right. But when that comes in, I don't think that closed yet.
It did close.
Okay, but...
The check is for $211,000.
Okay. What I was gonna say, that number's gonna double.
Yes.
So...
Yes, it has come in, but it's not recorded yet.
Okay.
But it did close last week.
Good job.
Yes.
Yeah. Jim, good job on that.
Nice to see that close.
Any other questions? As I said, I don't think there's too much in the expenditures that would be of any substantial note yet.
I'm good for now.
Okay.
I'll look, I'll look it over later.
Yep. Well, Tom will be here next month. So the next item is the Old Marlborough Turnpike Grant and I have invited Kristen Walker from the USDA to join us. I did talk with this, talk, I'm sorry.
Hello.
Okay. And there's Kristen, yeah. Hello, welcome.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
And I...
Okay, is it possible?
Go ahead.
Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, cool, I have a presentation for you.
Thank you.
Trying to keep it short.
Could you simply introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, I would love to. So I'm Kristen Walker. I am a civil engineer for the United States Department of Agriculture for the Natural Resources Conservation Service. And I'm here to represent a request that we have for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, the disaster recovery tier of our program. And so I'm here to present a little bit of a project that is in your town. I don't know, call it a disaster for now, it's not a project.
Okay.
Let's see if you can see this. Everybody seen this?
Yes.
Yes.
Wikipedia? Okay, let me get you on the first page here. So here's my intro slide. I am a civil engineer. I also have with me tonight Thomas Borcar, he's a state conservationist, and my boss, Adir Agrewall, who is a conservation engineer, so he's here to support me if you have any questions that I can't answer, I hope you'll sign them.
Thank you.
But anyways, basically what happened, we had a hurricane in Suez, we had some very large winds that caused some large trees to fall over on a deep embankment. At the time, there was some snow melt coupled with some large rainstorms that caused some super saturated soil. And the site that I'm speaking of, the soils are actually very unstable. And on Christmas Day, four Dorothy DePiero and Peter of 126 Old Marlborough Turnpike had probably about the worst Christmas present they could have ever gotten, in that they had a 20-foot-high landslide happen on their property, just below their house, just below their porch that they enjoy coffee out on every morning. And the stream that's below them is on Atlantic, Atlantic San Antonio. So there's a little picture of the area that we're talking about. There's 126 Old Marlborough Turnpike, their house. There's a giant landslide in this red area here. The yellow area indicates that there's a lot of debris, a lot of trees that fell over in the channel, causing blocking of the channel, causes the stream to actually redirect and hit directly at the toe of their embankment and scarf out this area very badly. If the picture speaks for itself.
Ooh.
That might be Peter.
There is a person at the top of the hill to give you perspective on the size.
Oh yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
What stream is that?
Reservoir.
Oh, the reservoir brook.
Yeah, help me out, guys, I don't have it labeled on my map, I'm so sorry.
Oh, Dave took care of that. We know, I know, yeah. Now, now I know.
I'm so sorry. Um, yeah, so as you can see, looking from Peter's view, this is what he saw, very large trees fogging your embankment, your, your stream, there's a lot of debris building up, you can see some sediment in here, and as we all know, sediment in streams is very bad for fishing wildlife and can also cause some detriment. This area is also susceptible to sliding and is probably ready to go unfortunately. I don't think it's getting any better for these two. So they actually reached out, the first selectwoman, Susan, thank you Susan, for taking their request and for handling it with such haste because this program does require us to ask and act back, emergency program, as you can see why. And it's administered through the USDA, through the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and it'd be work in conjunction with an eligible sponsor, in this case it would be a city, a town, a municipality, or you. So our program goals are to reduce runoff and prevent erosion, but really our goals are to relieve in a minute hazards to life and property that are created by an actual disaster, a sudden impairment of a watershed. So, what does this mean for you? Responsibilities, things that would be included for you. You would be responsible for up to, well, at least 25% of construction costs. And that can be in the form of cash, it could also be in the form of in-kind services, such as providing design surveys, if you provide equipment for the contract administration of the construction, inspection, all of these things can be considered in-kind services and would go towards the 25% of construction cost. It can be a combination of cash, cash and in-kind services, it's 25% responsibility of the town. You would also be responsible for obtaining any necessary permits and any property rights that would be used for temporary access for construction. It would be temporary. And then at the end of it, you would also be responsible for the operation and maintenance of the site, so it would have to be tended to. And RCS, well, we've already done quite a bit just to get to this point. We've done a lot of surveys and soils reports and taken a look at the site, done some non- penetrating radar out there actually, and done a cost estimate to be able to apply this program and get you in in time in order to be considered eligible. At this point, we are eligible. We also provide the other chunk of the change, big chunk. And we will provide some support, we do technical assistance, mostly a form of collaboration, you know, attending the meetings, helping you guys, maybe the permit process of this, like the permits really are your responsibility. We do review the design, we, you know, help you come up with ideas, of course. We will provide quality assurance, not quality control, quality assurance during construction. We also do some work with the cultural resources and we do the national diversity database coordination to help get our stuff in a row with permits and things like that, by that arena. Unfortunately, right now, we can't provide the design ourselves, we don't have the capacity or the staff to be able to do that, so we would be looking to the town and staff. And that's outlined kind of in some other responsibilities. So in this case, you'd be responsible for the design. You could do that in-house, as in, as per the in-kind service, which would work through your 25% on our construction cost, contracted by the private sector and just manage it, that's up to you. And you would provide the management of any bidding or solicitation in order to go to construction and get a contract, private contractor. At that point, we would provide up to 7.5% of those construction costs would be given to you guys for administrative purposes in order to manage your contracts. That's a whole law, but it's something. And we do also ask that you do the day-to-day inspection, the quality control, that's necessary for the construction. At the end of the day, I also often remind you this, you're responsible for the operation and maintenance, as a contractor becomes the owner of the project. So what we have to do is, we have to operate very quickly in order to do this, so our estimates are pretty rough, which isn't great news for a finance board, I realize that you're, you know, having to make decisions on very rough estimates. So what we do is, we go out, we come up with an estimate in order to secure the federal fund, in order to say, yes, we can go forward with this project and we have the funds on our side to do it. And that estimate can and will change as the time that you get it out. So although I come up with a scheme or an alternative and a preliminary design, it's gonna change. It's gonna change the first design, it's gonna change when it goes out to the contract, as far as how much, how much that's gonna cost. So right now, we base the design on four terrace concrete retaining walls, about 3.5 foot wall, I believe. Fourth one could be a boulder of that, and bottom of the, the embankment, we are planning on doing a vegetated riprap toe, because we know that G will sign off on that for permitting purposes. And in this particular site, as you guys might have seen with Peter standing up on top of the hill, it's a very difficult site for access, even around the landslide, it's very difficult, it's very steep slope. So we kind of made some bold assumptions that cranes are gonna be needed largely to haul things in and we're gonna use concrete, help trucks make things happen. So our estimates, just so you know, are very conservative, we try to keep them conservative, we put like a 25% contingency on it. And that's just to make sure that we can secure those federal funds, make sure we can cover our side of design when the time comes. So this is just a little profile view. Right here, you can see the split surface of the landslide in spotted line right here, natural slide. This would be the, the toe, the vegetated riprap toe, and then this is the series of the four different retaining walls. So we planned out, use that as the basis of our estimate. Very able to dial in the concrete quantities, very, you know, exactly in the riprap quantities, all out, pretty standard operating stuff, but when it comes to this site and trying to navigate the site and getting equipment down, that was kind of the big unknown. So we did, like I said, we did have the estimate quite a bit. Bottom line, which you guys are all interested in, what is this coffee? What do you, what is, what is our resident asking for in order for us to move forward? So the total project information estimate is estimated to be about a half a million dollars right now. Of that responsibility, if you were to get into an agreement for this, would be $120,000 give or take, and the RCS responsibility is outlined there, plus you would also give the $36,000 to administer the contract. Not included in this cost are some of the soft costs, okay, so the design, the inspection, permitting, land rights. We can't use land rights, we can't use land rights as part of in-kind services, but design and inspection are part of it. You know, I know this is a kind of a tiny little screen, which is to show you some ideas of where we came up with our costs. You know, you've got a pretty big ticket item in mobilization, about $20,000 there because we're thinking of booting cranes. We've got some access areas, tearing and grubbing is important on the site, gets that channel cleared out. And we've got the construction here, you can see that actual construction of the retaining walls isn't that much, it's really just, you know, there's some contingency in here. So anyways, you're not required to have this money in hand, show us the check for it right now, so we need to, you need to be comfortable with the amount that is required in order to move forward and you need to be able to plenty that up when the time comes. That's sort of, that's sort of one of the caveats of this program. Now, as the bids come in and the dollar amounts change, we still give you 75, we still carve 75% into 25%. So it becomes a little bit of a moving target when you're in construction, things are flexing and moving a little bit. So keep that in mind, if you decide to go forward with this agreement, you're gonna want to solve in a little bit of a contingency to cover any unanticipated construction, modification of things up. The guidelines are pretty hard for this program, they really want it to get done in 220 days. Permitting is difficult and does not happen in 220 days, as many of you probably know. So with that in mind, you know, we do entertain extensions and they are generally granted if we have a quick estimate. As long as you're making progress going forward, we can extend it, but you know, there comes a point where they're gonna want to give the money back and take away money from other disasters throughout the country. So any kind of extension request, you have to make them timely, of course, make sure that we get them and make sure that we can keep our money, and not that money disappears. If the agreement gets canceled, that money is gone, then it's hard to get it back. That's sort of, that's sort of just a rough presentation for you, I hope that you're glad. Here's some more contact information if you can ask questions, if they have any questions for me.
I have a question. What's the width of those walls? I couldn't take, I couldn't check, see that sheet, I couldn't tell.
Yeah, I didn't show you, yeah, so they vary in length. I'd have to, I'd have to pull it up on my spreadsheet, which I don't have it quite handy, but let me see if I can show you on the, maybe on this picture here, what we're thinking. So, you know, the first wall, we would come up, and I think the first wall would probably start somewhere around here, you know, we would do the vegetated riprap toe, and then we would slope it back, we would do another wall here. So they get, they get progressively shorter as we go up. And then up here, I was thinking really it would be better if we did just sort of a boulder of that, because there's gonna be a lot of holders in this area here anyhow, and it might be pretty good for these guys to look at, maybe easier to work with. So I, I do have those numbers somewhere and I can, I can dig them out, but I'm gonna have to stop while sharing my screen for a second. Anybody else have any other questions while I'm looking for that?
Was this, is that, was that stream, is that, that brook flowing through that property owner's property? Or was that town land and it just washed out?
Uh, it's a good question. It's a good question. I'm not exactly sure where the, where the flood plain starts and ends on that particular stretch right there. Yes, I, I believe it's privately owned.
Okay.
Dorothy's on, Dorothy, do you have, do you have any idea where the limit is, if your property lying down?
Well, maybe she's there.
Maybe she's on, maybe she's not. Yes, it is private property from what I understand. The walls, the walls are 376 feet long, one is 576 feet and one is 45, that looks like.
And like, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, how are you? My own to the center of the brook. Where you're, on the other side of my brook, it's a Portland Conservation easement. That's actually where a lot of the damming occurred. So when my tree fell, in Isa Eas, it fell on top of the damming that was occurring already. In fact, I have a picture showing the people's pockets were coming from downstream and everything from upstream, and so my tree falling on it exacerbated it. The, the one point I wanted to make also is that we were during a period of drought. What you're seeing here is after we cleared the stream. If you take a look at the trees that were cut... If you take a look at the trees that were cut, they had to be cut to clear the pathway of the stream so the water wouldn't keep rushing at the hill and knocking it down. All the Woody mass had been moved over to the side. In fact, you're seeing it in the yellow outline there. So what had happened was we were in drought and then you couldn't even tell, it was hardly a trickle in that brook. The people that know reservoirs probably can't believe that it became like the Colorado River. It was just so amazing. I have tons of videos to show you if anybody wanted to see it. So what happened was we knew that the only way we could prevent more land from washing away was to, you know, get the trees removed from the brook. Jim Sipley was one of the first to see this. I have a number of people, in fact, some engineers, who came to see all of the debris in the brook. And they said, you gotta get that out. We were lucky that we found Luismann Tree Services that would actually go into that brook and cut the tree to free the path of the water so it would go back down to the central part of the brook. Anyway, to answer the first question, I own to the center of the brook, everything on the other side belongs to the Portland Conservation Commission. And also, we had cleared the land on that side out of necessity. So we cleared part of the town land. It's not like I'm looking for reimbursement of it, it's just something so critical that had to be done or else we would have had more of our land washing away. You see how close it is to our house. There was that fear that is the land going to stop falling down? Is the house going to slide down into hill? I must say, I've lived here 32 years and I have never, ever witnessed any kind of erosion like that on my property. I've never witnessed anything. It would have been the last thing in my life that I would have imagined that I'd have to deal with heading into retirement. So it's a very scary situation and I just wanted to say to everybody, thank you for giving this time and your attention and I'm hoping that we can come up with some sort of solution so that I don't wind up losing my house.
I will add that the 25% share just needs to come from other non-federal sources. We don't get involved where it comes from, I don't really want to know. Don't look into that too much. But it's not come from other federal sources and double dip. So that is one stipulation on that 25% responsibility.
And Kristen, that's for construction only?
Yes.
So design and inspection would be more?
Design and inspection, yes, that would be more. And that, but those could be part of the in-kind, part of the in-kind service that you would be required to hold up.
Right.
But typically, you know, yeah, you know, the project can be difficult to manage with the design and the management. But you guys are here to determine.
I, I.
Hello?
Yeah. I think you had mentioned the sponsorship. This is Lou Fair, I'm on the Board of Selectmen. You explained the sponsorship that could be not just the town, it could be the owner of the property, is that correct?
So we looked into that briefly and we don't know, we've never dealt with a situation where the other 25% came from the landowner. We didn't find anything that said that it couldn't come from the landowner. Like I said, try not to get involved with where that other 25% comes from as long as it's not coming from federal sources. Frankly, if there was a GoFundMe, I'm sure we'd be able to.
So in most of these cases where there's a situation like an erosion of a brook or a stream or a river, the sponsorship is usually a municipality?
No, we've dealt with towns and cities and, you know, the like.
But the sponsorship has never been the owner of the property?
No, not in Connecticut. Maybe somewhere else in the country, but not in Connecticut that we know of.
So this is Tom Morgart, I'm the State Conservationist. And policy requires that we're working with municipalities for this program.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That makes it clearer.
I might have misunderstood what a municipality means, I'm sorry.
Well, obviously, this kind of an expenditure is not budgeted within the town of Portland's budget. And I would say that we would need to speak with the homeowner, the property owner, to determine how this would be paid for. This is a substantial project. My concern is not just for Dorothy's property, but also for the other areas of this brook and the contiguous properties. Can you comment at all, as engineers, that scenario that says nothing is done? What happens to the rest of the area, potentially?
Yeah, I mean, I think this picture can speak a lot too. I mean, you can see it's not done. These slopes are not stable. And further over towards the left of my screen is another neighbor that we actually counted as half this property potentially going into the project. This was completely deprogrammed. The amount of channel debris and sediment that's in there isn't good either. And the fact that this is an Atlantic salmon run, you know, both well for the project becoming eligible because it's more concerning for us as well, where we're standing from. So we have, you know, the Atlantic salmon worry about, we've got the neighbors over here to the left. You think the slide is not as bad once we go over to the right, starts to level off over here? And I have less concern over here, but I do have concerns with the other neighbor and part of this property as well. So and also I have concerns about just driving along marble turnpike. I almost turned off like three different houses, thinking that, oh, this has to be it, this is sitting right on our precipice. So I've got to think that this could be another problem somewhere else that could be secondary.
Just a piece of clarification. The NRCS is not FEMA?
We are not FEMA, that is correct.
So is it possible that, you know, I mean, this was a, I think we had a statewide disaster. I think it was claimed it was a disaster area in the state at that time. Are there funds from FEMA that would be able to help with this project?
Yes, we would be able to use them as my funds because that would be double-dipping federal funds.
Okay, so the total cost from either NRCS and FEMA would still be $360,000?
Right, and I don't know what program FEMA would have for this. There may be something, I'm sure. Yeah, I know I looked and there was something similar, but, but yeah.
Okay, so my question is FEMA wouldn't pay the 120 sponsorship?
Nope.
Okay.
Great question.
Now, the dollars, I, as far as what research we've been able to do, Kristen, I know you looked at any potential other grants. It's very difficult. I'm not going to say there's ever an impossibility, but it would be very difficult to get dollars from any place other than other sources. And this is on private property. I think the Selectmen have to consider the safety of the residents, have to consider the safety of that neighborhood, as well as the environmental concerns that you've presented for the stream. Also, I'll remind the Selectmen, I think they all know it, but I'll remind them, that this stream is a dammed stream upstream. That's the Portland Reservoir. And the dam creates the Portland Reservoir. We're not using it right now for public water, but should there ever be difficulty with the dam, which I will assure the Selectmen, we do maintain, have inspected, make repairs and so forth. But I just want to contextualize this, that if you're at the reservoir, there's the dam and then the residual water comes down along Old Marlboro Turnpike. And there is quite, as you see in these pictures, quite a steep embankment. And Dorothy indicated that she's lived there 32 years, so at least her house is that old and some of the other houses along there are probably of a similar age. I remember moving to town about 39 years ago and there not being a lot of houses in that area. Now, I'm not the expert on it, but I know that some of those houses were built. My concern is the kinds of storms that we're having are, as I quote Kristen, a disaster. I mean, if this storm were to hit again this month, I don't know what could happen in that area. And to determine how it's going to be expended is what has to be determined. If you leave it alone, you're going to see the potential, which I think is very risky, of further destruction of that bank. And it's very concerning to me. We see this happen all over the country where there's other landslides of this nature. I mean, I was just astonished to see these pictures myself when I first saw them.
Thank you, Susan. You know, you can look here, you can see Dorothy's house is here. And you can see the contours are, you know, they're fairly close together here in this landslide area. There's another house here. I mean, their contours are even closer together, that one is even.
I see that.
Same goes here and here. I mean, you can see these houses. So yeah, I mean, it's a, you know, the interesting thing was, these are native soils too. We thought maybe it was filter that had created this problem, but literally you have a situation where you essentially have a really condensed glacial till and a very fine, poorly graded sand above it. Kind of like putting marbles over the top of marble. Very brutal landslide.
With this pro, I have another question, Kristen. With this project, let's say all things fall into place and it's completed, okay, theoretically. What does that do for the other areas within those steep contours? Does it have any effect on them? Does it, I'm not an engineer.
Exacerbate it?
Yeah, does it exacerbate the problem? Does it improve? What happens?
Sure, sure. I think those are really great questions to ask because, as you know, when you start to hard armor things on a stream bank, you can have kind of a ping pong effect where water goes down, it hits that hard wall and then it bounces off and then it blows out the opposite embankment, right?
Yeah.
You've probably seen or heard about that. In this case, you know, we would really try to tie it in well so that it would be very limited impact. The nice thing is you've got this really big brook right here in front of it where you've got a lot of room for the stream to sort of meander and go around. You've got this sort of sediment area in here. So, you know, yeah, it's definitely something we would have to take a real close look at and make sure that we aren't going to cause another issue for this person down here or, you know, this guy over here for sure. We want to make sure that we're going to tie it all in. So yeah, so we need to be properly engineered. But, you know, I think the way that the stream meanders here and the way that the flow would go, I think it would sort of along in a nice parallel fashion. And, you know, really, the situation with Dorothy's house, it was really caused by a lot of different things, but probably the biggest thing being the trees blocking the channel and sort of redirecting the channel altogether. I mean, it's not like we've got the channel naturally trying to take Dorothy out here. It just so happened that that was in a weakness once the tree hit. But we can kind of reestablish this tow line here. I think we can get that stream just looking along there like it should.
Other questions from the Selectmen?
Yeah, you said earlier that that house was in a floodplain? I'm just curious, why do the.
I'm not sure, I haven't, I haven't looked, I haven't looked at the floodplain now.
All right. I was just curious why the homeowner wasn't required to have flood insurance?
So the floodplain would be really interesting here because it would be sort of like a lateral floodplain. They're definitely not elevation-wise in the floodplain. It sits big 20 feet above, you know, the creek. It would be a matter of, you know, the floodplain is somewhere over this area, but really there's a very steep embankment there, you know? So I'd have to look at the floodplain now. No, they don't sit at an elevation that floods at all. But laterally, you know, this, laterally, this creek may want to move in, may want to take after a little marble turnpike eventually, so.
Hi, Dorothy, again, I just wanted to add to this. Interestingly enough, when I bought the house, it wasn't designated as a floodplain. And I was thinking about refinancing it one time about 10 years ago and then suddenly they said FEMA had re-designated areas and if you're five miles away from the river, you're in the flood zone. Okay, so I said, you know, what's the point of refinancing? And I forget flood insurance, this is crazy because the bottom line here is, and Liz Tripp checked this for me when I had called her in the beginning of January of this year, and her first thought was FEMA. Because I said, you know, some reason or other, now you're designated in a flood zone here. And they talked to them and FEMA said, no, it's not really flood, it's only a flood if it goes into your house. Now, obviously, with the elevation, and Kristen, you've seen it, there's no way. So I had even been talking to Peter and saying, I really think that FEMA should re-designate this area because it gives the false impression that we are in the flood zone like we are near the fairgrounds, which is absolutely not the case. We're so height elevated that that hill was about 40 feet or 20 feet in all the property along here. So I think it's kind of like a faulty designation that FEMA gave for one reason or other much later on, much later than I had bought my house originally in 1989. But, so I thought I would just mention.
Have they ever made you get flood insurance, Dorothy?
Oh, no, I, no. First of all, when I bought the house, it wasn't designated as being in a flooding zone. It was much later on. FEMA re-outlined and they kind of did reassessments of different land masses, probably because of the disasters. So the point is that they designated it much later on. So I didn't need flood insurance when I first bought the house because it wasn't in a flood zone. But then when FEMA redesigned its plans of five miles away from the river or whatever the case, when I went to refinance at a lower interest rate, I said, oh, we're in a flood zone. And they said, we could fight it with FEMA. And I said, you know, what's the point? I'll just, you know, pay off my mortgage or whatever and be done with it. But the point here is anyway, this was not a flood, it was a landslide. And even though the stream was crazy between the melting 10 or 12 inches of snow that we had had a couple of days prior to that and the unusually low temperature of 63 degrees on Christmas Day with heavy torrential rain, it just impacted that brook and all the waterways in such a way that it caused that brook to flow with incredible force. It was fierce the way it was going down. And as Kristen had pointed out, because there was debris and some damming to begin with from people having problems of their trees falling upstream, their branches were collecting around the two boulders on the other side, which is on the conservation side. You can see that in the picture. Were buckets stuck there, there was everything stuck there. So when my tree that you see, now you can only see little part of the root ball, when that fell and it hit on top of the existing damming that was occurring, it looked like a little beaver dam with all of the torrential rain and the incredible flow of the brook. It just caused the water to go around the tree that fell and it just gushed at the side of my hill and it took. And if you look at the picture that Kristen has on her screen. If you look at the picture that Kristin has on her screen, if you look on the right, it looks like a wooly tree ball down there. That's not. That's the side of the hill. Literally, the whole side of my hill fell. The left looks bad. The right side was even worse. It took down a huge tree with it. There were two little hemlocks. They were like on their side. If you looked at it, I have some pictures on it. One of the engineers I had dealt with very, very early on, you could actually see trees growing. It looks like they're growing sideways. So, it, to get back to the point, was not a flood. It's not labeled as a flood. And as far as FEMA's, FEMA's designation is concerned, they're incorrect about that. And Liz Tripp had also called them. And I think, Kristin, I thought at one point you had too, and I said, no, no, it's not considered, you know...
No, no, I gotta probably follow up. But, yeah, yeah, we don't even classify it as a flood. We call it a landslide on our, our emergency program.
Yes, and that's exactly what it is, because it wasn't like the flood went all the way up to the top of the trees that you're looking at. It's that the, the water that was gushing, it kind of washed up. What can happen from below? It literally took all of the, probably, I don't know, I'm thinking a couple of feet, it just kind of wiped it out, causing the top to, to the rest of the hill to just collapse on itself. It just collapsed. You know, it was just amazing looking at our window on Christmas Day, and I do have the videos of that as well. And watching your land just fall into the stream, the stream was a muddy mess. It looked like, I can't even tell you what it sounded like. Quite incredible.
A quick question on that diagram. Do you know about how high up the water went with the damming, and how high up the hill the water actually was impacting the side of the hill? Did you capture any of that in the video or any of the other pictures, you know, of that day?
Ah, you're talking, you're talking to me? Okay.
Yeah, I don't...
Well, yeah, whoever. I don't know if those... Yeah, I mean, whoever. I just didn't know if we know, you know, kind of how high up the water... Because obviously, it's, it's collapsed from pretty, pretty, you know, far up the hill, closer to the top, which means obviously with the undermining. I was just kind of curious if we know how high up the water went with that damming.
Pretty young. About that high.
Oh, you got the wrong drawing.
We don't see...
Do you see my video?
Yeah, we don't see it. Sorry.
No?
We see your email.
We see the email on it. Just not run them.
Your video screen.
Okay. Hmm, okay, hold on.
It's an email, right?
Let me, let me find that again. Share. We looked it up. Here it is. I got it. Or Dorothy sent this to me the other day. Having found me out there on that back deck, it must be quite a thrill, Dorothy.
So, it wasn't the...
Oh, my gosh.
So, it wasn't from my...
Now, this was the more recent storm, and I did share this video with the selectmen. This is not the storm from August of 2020.
No, this is, what, '09, is that right, Dorothy?
Kristin, I have, I had sent you a video early on about what the stream looked like on Christmas Day.
Okay.
I could send you that again.
I have it. I have it.
Yeah, that should give you a good idea.
Yep. You did.
Did the debris, did the first trees fall during that, the tropical storm? And then that created, started to create the difference in flow and the damming? And then the Christmas storm, rainstorm?
I believe so.
Is when the bank actually gave way?
Could you verify that, Kristin? Did you hear what selectman Shar just said?
Yeah, yeah. So, basically, Isaias came and wiped the trees out first, right, Dorothy? And then those blocked the string.
Now, I, I actually do have to correct that.
Oh, please, please do.
Yes, yes, because this is actually very critical.
Yes.
What had happened, the, some trees had fallen across the brook, and you could see they were conservation on theirs, and it fell, fortunately didn't fall in my direction. I lost one tree during Isaias. I must say this, that over the past three or four years, we've been noticing that the brook has been widening. And a couple of neighbors up the way lost about 30 trees. So, something happened upstream. I don't know what it is. So, as a result, people were starting to get damming in the brook from other people's tree debris. But anyway, so here's the thing. So, only one tree fell from Isaias, and it fell on that area that was starting to jam up near those two rocks that also had a little bump in it from someone. And so, what happened, everything was fine. The brook was, the brook was going, the, the brook was going nicely, you know, this drought, everything else. So, it wasn't until the Christmas storm began going back to the 12, 12 inches of snow that was melting in 63 degrees, torrential downpour, that the stream started to get this very, very heavy flow. So, between the damming and the, the woody mass from the tree that was laying kind of across the brook, it redirected the water at my hill. That caused the trees and the landslide. It was pretty amazing to see huge trees and chunks of land with trees still in them, fully grown 80-foot trees on a chunk of my hill, falling across the brook. So, that's how. And then we had a tree...
Is that it, Dorothy? This video here?
Yes, yes. And you'll see, I had an 80-foot hemlock that was teetering right on the parapists. We had to get that taken.
Oh, so it's this tree right here blocking right here, huh?
Yeah, there, it was actually more teetered right. It was a great big hemlock.
Okay, let's see if we can see this again.
Oh, oh, that's right. See the wooly, the woody mass? Yeah, that's what... You see the way the water is flowing around directly to my hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what happened. That's what happened.
And that tree, where did that one come from, Dorothy?
That, that one was on, on my property. That had fallen during Isaias.
Okay.
So, just to get the process right, there. And you'll see there were a bunch of trees right on the parapists. They were swaying back and forth. In fact, we didn't even sleep at this end of the house for days, till we were able to get it done on Monday, following Monday after Christmas. So, oh, and I had a huge maple tree that just fell on its side in slow motion. It wasn't hard enough to watch this, but it had to fall in slow motion on its side after the big chunk of land had fallen, the weak part of the hill had fallen. I would say probably about 10-foot piece, 15-foot piece, with hemlocks on it, and, and big tree fell right across the brook. So, when you, you, when you see the pictures that you see for the most part, where it looks like the tree chunks are cut, those were cut because the debris was in the water and was making it worse. And then, of course, there being that, so that's why, you know, you had no choice. Which the insurance company didn't want to pay for it either, because it didn't hit that.
Any other questions?
No insurance.
Right, no insurance, right, Dorothy?
No insurance, hell?
No, no. I had called two days after it happened, and they said that, that first of all, because the tree didn't hit the house, they only paid for any damage to the house. So, I had said, well, I would have been better off if I let the tree fall on the house. And I said, well, no, because if you identified it as a hazardous tree, we could then say, we'll pay you for it. Seriously. And then, what happened was, I sent her pieces of my policy. I, 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 because she said, I'm going to deny it, and I refuted that. I said, no, I have, my policy tells me if there is a dangerous tree, a tree that fell because of this, that, you know, and it's going to be a threat to your house or your wife, policy would pick it up. Well, no, she got back in touch with me the next day, because there is an exclusions section in your policy, and I will tell everyone there, look at the exclusions section in your policy, because guess what? No matter what else you're paying for on your policy, and regardless of what it's saying, if it's in the exclusions, land movement, that's what they call it, land movement. It doesn't matter how the land moves, even though I had explained, well, initially it was a tree that fell from Isaias that was considered an emergency, this is an emergency for the state. Nope, that wasn't good enough. It doesn't matter how the land was moved, they just don't pay for it.
So, somewhat of the synopsis is, there's a terrible disaster here. USDA is telling us they would be, they're, they're finding eligibility to the municipality of the figure of 75% of the construction to make repairs. 25% would have to come from other sources besides federal dollars. In addition, the administration of the construction, I think, was 7 and 1/2% of the total construction cost for administration could come back to the municipality. But the design and oversight of the work that would have to be done is an additional cost. And the town of Portland does not have an in-house engineer. We pay our engineer per job, so that would be an additional cost that is not part of the 80, excuse me, not part of the 75, 25. So, the design...
That could be part of your 20, that could be part of your 25.
Yes, but it is an additional expense over the $120,000. I just wanted to do that edification for the selectmen. And these, as Kristin pointed out, USDA has done their best to put in a large contingency, a 25% contingency, so that, you know, barring unforeseen circumstances, these dollars should be a conservative estimate. But we all know, in, in terms of any estimates that you're doing, that's the definition. It is an estimate. It could be less, potentially could be more, but they have added in a large contingency to wager that it is a good number. This is a lot of information, Kristin, for the full board to review. I want to thank you for coming again. I and Bob Shay have seen this presentation before, but I can say that I got more out of it today, because it is a rather challenging situation, and it certainly is a dangerous situation if something is not done in that area.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate just being able to explain the situation, and Dorothy being able to explain it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And Dorothy, we will need to have more discussions with you as the property owner. So, I will be in touch to see how we can have further discussions, and then the selectmen will need to give this due, due consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll be here if there are questions you have, glad to answer.
Thank you very much. That ends the presentation for tonight, but not end the situation. Thank you, and we'll be in touch, Dorothy. And thank you again, Kristin, and the other members of USDA for all of your help and guidance on this very important matter.
Thanks, everybody, for making time for us, and if you're okay with that, I'll probably sign off then.
Yes, thank you, and have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, thank you. So, the next item is a reiteration of a smoking ban on town property. I did note that as part of our concerts, we do sometimes have people who are smoking. So, I wanted to reiterate that there is no smoking at our concerts, on our properties, and as an ongoing effort toward health and well-being, and certainly in cooperation with Chatham Health District, the Town of Portland Board of Selectmen is reissuing its no smoking policy on August 4th tonight. And I prepared a letter that will go out to the public, so they're aware that the policy was originally passed by a previous board in 2016. There is no smoking of any kind, and that would include vaping as well as tobacco smoking on any property or in any building of the Town of Portland. This includes no smoking at events in all our parks and on our properties. And as we know, according to the American Lung Association, once smokers quit, within 20 minutes of smoking that last cigarette, their blood pressure decreases, pulse rate drops, and the body temperature of hands and feet, oh, I made a mistake there, I said feet, feet.
Feet.
Decrease. And for more information, you can always find out more help to stop smoking and the effects of it at cdc.gov/tobacco. So, what I wanted to do is bring it to you. It's a simple reiteration and a re, a re-emphasis on the fact that smoking is banned on town. Is there a motion to approve?
I think that's good. I, I will make a motion to support this no smoking letter that enhances our town policies. And I will have to say that I noticed that at the concert the other night, there were signs that were posted, no, no smoking.
Good.
So, you know, it's there. It's a good thing.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further comments?
Uh, just, should we, I, I know just that the smoking and vaping, though, I just don't know if people would be confused between the two.
Well, what do you...
Should we add slash vaping?
Do you want to?
Because I don't know, like, chemistry that well, but is smoking and vaping two different?
It could be, yes.
Right? Aren't they like one? So, I'm just saying, like, someone legally could be like, oh, technically I'm not smoking, I'm vaping, so...
Then why don't we add vaping?
I would just add vaping, just to cover our...
And you know what else, Mike? We can change the policy if you approve it. Prohibit smoking and vaping.
And all tobacco products? That's, that would include dipping, chewing, whatever?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, let's take a look at the policy. The Town of Portland, as a municipal government entity, hereby designates the Town of Portland as smoke-free, thereby prohibiting smoking. Would it be vaping and use?
And smoking, vaping, and other tobacco use?
Okay.
Something like that.
Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Good.
Because that's too many tobacco, too.
In any building or recreational property operated and owned by the town. Town of Portland prohibits smoking, vaping, and other tobacco use in the following areas: all town buildings, facilities, offices, and recreational properties; two, all town vehicles; and three areas near flammable and combustible liquids. So, I think that's a good change to the policy. And I will say on the cover page, there is no smoking, in the second paragraph, vaping and other tobacco use of any kind. Right?
Right.
Okay. So, should I restate my motion to...
Yes, why don't we, you withdraw?
Yeah, I'll withdraw that motion, but the motion I'd like to make is to, a motion to follow the amended smoking ban on town property policy to include vaping and other tobacco products.
Okay, products. Good.
I guess I'll second that.
I was waiting for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have to, do we have to amend the ban? Do we have to take a motion on that as well?
Yes, I think that, yes, I think that motion that Lou just made was on the policy.
Oh, it was on the policy.
The letter is just a reiteration of the policy.
Yeah, okay. Your motion was on the...
On the policy.
On the policy, which I seconded.
You did a good job.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, that's good clarification. And then the letter is simply reiterating what the policy changes. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to amend the smoking ban on town property policy. And is there any further discussion on that? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. I think that's a big improvement to this.
That was a good point, Mike.
Yeah. And, and I will have to say, I noticed most people were not smoking.
I did.
But there were some people that were smoking that may have not seen the signs.
Yes.
And I think they were the group that were playing, the, the band that played that night.
Oh.
Maybe they didn't see the signs because they were in the back.
Yeah.
You know, they were just getting-
Oh, they might not have known.
You know, and they didn't know.
I think sometimes people believe they're outside and they're-
But maybe that's something that Nate could remind people.
Yes. We'll do our best.
Yeah. And, and that's, exactly. We'll do our best.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. The next item is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Uh, we have no refunds tonight. Uh, do we have status reports? I have nothing.
I've got a couple items. Um, I attended the Water and Soil Commission meeting this past Monday. Um, interesting meeting. Um, the, the prime topic really was they were talking about new meters. And looking at meters that, um, effectively, instead of mechanically having to go around and read them or even driving by to read them, these meters would provide some additional capabilities. One, they would, uh, basically be homed, dual-homed to two different collectors in town. Um, those collectors have a capacity to handle a lot of the meter, you know, a lot of meters at one time. So, you wouldn't need a large number of collectors. It would really be based more on geography and proximity to, to where the meters that need to be read are. Um, but effectively, it would then be read and brought back through a portal, um, so all the meters would be remote read. It basically does polling once an hour, effectively twenty-four reads, um, per day, which means, and that data would actually be uploaded and, and be available in a portal. So, for example, that type of technology, which is something that I know I'm seeing a lot, you know, in, in the industry that I'm in, um, would allow users, for example, to, if they're having water use at three o'clock in the morning and everybody's home, you know, asleep, to try to figure out, maybe they have a leak. There's also acoustic capabilities of those meters that when you get a lot of these deployed, um, there's some leak detection capabilities. If you start, start sensing, you know, from an audio standpoint, you start sensing leaks in the, um, in, in the pipes, it can help undo leak identification, things of that nature. So, it's, was the first discussion I had been at, um, for the commission, talking about new type of meter technology. But it was, uh, very interesting, and I think given some of the challenges we have with the old technology we have today, um, very timely discussion. Um, also attended, um, last week, the Brownfield Redevelopment Task Force. Um, probably the, the biggest takeaway from that meeting is that they, the task force is right now, uh, going through an internal survey. Uh, there were some potential uses, things that had been discussed, um, you know, over, over the period of time as potential uses for that redevelopment, just basically what kind of characteristics people would like to see. That, um, that, um, survey went out to the task force members, and they're gonna be completing that to kind of get a sense of where the task force is at for recommended uses. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have two.
Sure.
Okay. The Clean Energy Task Force met recently. Uh, Alan Saban, who's a solar energy person who works, had been working with us with the old, uh, transfer station, uh, also had, uh, also works with Clean, the, uh, Green, Green Bank, uh, group. And he has asked them if, in fact, the arrays that could possibly be placed on the recreational complex and the, um, the high school track concession stand. Uh, those are two areas that were looked at, and they were small. However, he's gone back to the Green Bank and he's talked to the Green Bank people, and he said, "No, nothing is too small." He should be able to support these as well. So, it seems as if the Green Bank is more favorable in supporting that type of a, an array in a smaller setting.
Smaller setting.
Uh, so that is the, um, the, those two areas. The, as we talked earlier, the transfer station's on hold until next year. Uh, and the other thing is that the East Hampton Clean Energy Task Force and the Portland Clean Energy Task Force is gonna hold a joint event in East Hampton. Uh, it's a car show. It's gonna be held at the, uh, East Hampton High School in September. I don't have the exact date right now. It'll be posted in the River East, uh, but it's in September. And, um, there is a car dealership company that's gonna come and bring, uh, some electric cars. And other people that have electric cars are gonna bring their electric cars to a car showing. So, so instead of bringing the GTO, you know, they're gonna bring the electric cars. So, that's a, a nice event that's happening in East Hampton, but it's co-sponsored by East Hampton and Portland. Uh, the all, the, um, Airline Trail, uh, committee met last week as well. Uh, one of the focuses was on pollinator areas and designated areas for pollinating gardens. Uh, as you know, there's a pollinator garden on the trail. Uh, they planted seed when it didn't rain, so not too many flowers came up. Weeds came up, so we're gonna have to re, uh, re, uh, redo our effort in weeds some more. Uh, one of the thoughts were to, instead of using seed, maybe plants. So, if anybody has any extra perennial plants that are pollinator type of types, then, uh, we'll take those and we'll use those, probably planting those sometime in September or October. And that's it for my report.
Very good. Thank you.
Another question. On the, the solar panels at the transfer station, and you said not happening this year, but is there still a possibility they might happen?
Yes, yes.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I, um, also, uh, with help from Rob Cleese, submitted some testimony. Too deep for their consideration of changing the, um, whole, at, the slope matter that we talked about last time. So, hopefully, they'll review my testimony and consider some changes in the rules, which would then perhaps be more friendly to landfills in the third round. It's a, I believe it's a five or six-year program, and there, this is year two. So, we would be applying for year three.
Get another crack at it. The slope doesn't seem that bad.
Huh. When you looked at that.
I know. Well, yeah, that's extreme.
Yeah.
But-
Yeah. Right. Fifteen percent is what they said you had to be, less than. Fifteen percent slope.
Yeah, but it's more than fifteen percent at the landfill?
Yeah. In certain areas. Not in the entire area, but in some of the areas. And it meant that we had, would have a much reduced array number, number of arrays.
Okay.
So, it didn't become viable.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other reports?
I have one item I was just gonna bring up. I don't have anything from, uh, commissions that I go to because they're all meeting either next week, week after, but, but there is one thing, and I was just looking at my calendar to see the timing, that actually, um, after the last Board of Selectmen meeting, the following day, three of us and two of the police officers went to the, uh, youth crime, uh, juvenile crimes public forum in Glastonbury, um, which was very, um, informative and, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of the good discussion. We, we had to unfortunately leave prior to some of the discussion, but-
Well, I did testify, so that was good. And I did say that, you know, Portland was there to support efforts toward improvements. So, I thought that was good. Good point. Thank you.
Yeah. And I know that there was, I guess, another one that occurred in East Hartford the following week, so there-
Great.
So, there, um, certainly, you know, probably all need to do our part in trying to get the word out to, hopefully get some legislation that would support some of the changes that really need to, uh, take place in order to address this issue.
Do you know if there's been any, um, I know that the big focus of conversation was on potential special session to talk about it? Have you heard anything?
No word. Anybody else?
Um, I'll just mention that last week, Susan, um, Lou and, and I, along with, um, the town engineer, met with a, a, um-
Chris, Chris Costello.
Chris Costello from, um, Tilcon, so one of the Tilcon managers, and had some discussion on the site about a potential easement that they, they would give the town, uh, so that we could have access to our, uh, riverfront property that goes between Merritt and Boatyard and Riverside Marina. Um, and, uh, you know, it's kind of, it, it looks favorable. I mean, it's not, uh, all sort of signed off yet, but it would, it would start with the area where the old Little League field is, which the town did have an easement for. And, um, I think they would reestablish that easement and also give some additional land that kind of goes behind their processing plant. Um, so do they pathway or roadway, driveway type, not a major road, but an access road that could get at least a vehicle down in there or, or foot traffic down in there. So, that looks, um, you know, like a positive development to be able to utilize some of the town, uh, open space land for further recreation.
Yeah, I thought it was a good meeting. And our town engineer will propose a pathway, and I, uh, will send that on to, to, uh, Mr. Costello at Tilcon. You know, Tilcon, for over, um, I think, over fifty years, a long time, allowed the Town of Portland to use the Little League field, and that is their land. And this would be for us to continue to use some of that land, as well as, as you pointed out, Rick, the ability to get to our land behind their processing plant. So, that, that really would be, um, advantageous. But Tilcon's been a great business partner in allowing the town to use their land for so many years. And we want to thank them again publicly for their cooperation and their generosity to generations of youngsters in our town.
Yeah. And it appears that it, in, that that's probably the best spot, say, and safest for people having, uh, future river access. Like, it, it, once you get down there, it's kind of flat, it's sort of a hard pack, some, well, it could be muddy at certain times of the year, but you're not dealing with big boulders, you're not dealing with a deep slope. And the channel, as you know, Jim, it's on the other side of the river, so it's-
Yeah, once you get around the corner, the channel runs to the south side, and it's in a no-wake zone.
And it's in a no-wake zone, so-
Safer animal.
That, that seems to be the consensus after-
That's good.
-a few years of talking to different people about this, so.
Yeah.
Thanks. That's a good report.
Excellent.
If there's no other status reports, we'll see if there's any public comment. Nick?
Yeah, we have one message from Don Gooney. He says, "Susan, are we considering setting a precedent for the town to pay for damage on private property from an act of nature?"
Thank you for your comments. Um, we are considering helping someone, um, given the circumstances. And I think we also have to look at the nature of that type of a landslide and that it doesn't affect other houses in that area. So, there's still an open question here, and I think it's important for the selectmen to give this due consideration. Thank you. Informal discussion? Items?
I have, I have one. You wanna talk? You wanna talk?
Well, you can go first and then I'll-
I have just one, a follow-up on our presentation tonight.
Sure.
Are there, I mean, you had alluded to the fact that there may be some other funding sources. I'm wondering if Norm Needleman or Chrissy Tarpeau knows of any state funding?
I can certainly ask them.
You know, maybe if you could ask them and see if that, that would help. Uh, and what would be the in-kind? I mean, that's kind of a, a steep slope. I don't know if you can put any equipment in there.
We, we don't have the ability. In a larger municipality, there would be probably a staff engineer. We don't have that. So, in-kind services are going to cost you money. I mean, I, I want to have a conversation with the property owner to see, um, what their thoughts are. Because as far as, um, you know, looking at this, there is the potential of a federal grant, but it is something we have to take very careful consideration on, you know.
And the other question is that, let's say, let's say, we do get the federal grant, and then somehow we get some other money and we don't use town money to do this. What happens next time there's another storm upstream and there's a similar type situation? Are we kind of committed to do the same for that resident?
It's all about precedent.
All about precedent.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus, it sounded like, as the conversation went on, that there were trees in that stream from previous storms. Had they been cleared, might not have created as much of a mess that happened.
But who's responsible?
Well, I know. This is a, yeah, it, it's, it's a tough one.
Yeah.
Did you have another topic, Rick?
Well, I just wanted to mention, I missed the last meeting, and I may have to miss a couple of more because I'm involved in a zoning issue in Colchester, and their commission meets, in fact, time and night.
Yes, we do.
That we do.
Okay.
Um, so, I'll, I'll let you know, but I, I know I'm on, I'm probably gonna be on their agenda again in mid-August and possibly September till we get this resolved. Now, if I can get somebody else to represent me, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll be here.
All right. Fair enough.
The last time I, I've since hired an attorney. Last time I had to go myself. Now, I have somebody representing me, so maybe I won't have to be at all the meetings.
Well, thanks for letting us know. We understand.
That's why I was absent.
Thank you. Any other items? I have nothing on follow-up, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will-
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's nine thirty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.